Are we doing the pledge?
I'm sorry?
Are we gonna do the pledge of allegiance?
Oh, we don't do the special meetings.
Okay.
Just regular meetings.
Good evening. I'll bring tonight's special city council meeting to order. Is there a motion on tonight's agenda?
I'll make a motion to adopt tonight's agenda for the August 30th special city council meeting.
Okay.
Motion made. Second any discussion. Hearing none. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? That motion passes. So tonight, we're here to have, conduct interviews for candidates interested in filling our vacant city council seat. And kind of a little bit about kind of format for tonight, we're gonna go in alphabetical order of the candidates. So Tanner Belfney will be first, then Dan Dobbs, Wanda McLaren, and then Randy Blasance. Each of the candidates should have been sent out and received a kind of a set of questions. And it's more of a framework kind of of the information that we're trying to gather, you know, as we make our selection tonight. So when we start, each candidate, you're welcome to make an opening statement, talk about as much as you want, you know, as much as these questions fulfill. We don't have to go through all of them. But you know, it's your time to present yourself to council and why you want to be in our city council. And then following the interviews, council, we have ballots here. And so each of us, each of the four of us will select one candidate, and that'll go into Jack, and Jack will tally those votes. And there's a couple different ways it can be handled. But basically, what'll probably be whoever gets the most votes will make a motion and pass a resolution. So that's kind of the structure of it. So the backend of it might be a little dynamic depending on how the votes come in. But that's kind of the format. Jack, you wanna add anything, or?
No, I think you covered it very well. The, as Mayor Voss mentioned, the back end of this, in order to make an appointment, there has to be a majority vote of the quorum of city council. So it has to be three votes to get an approval. There are several ways to do that. After the first round of voting, if there's not three votes for one candidate, as Mayor Voss mentioned, there'll be a motion made to approve probably the person that gets two votes, and then it will be up to council then to vote on that motion.
Yeah. And then there's, there'll be discussion on that too, so.
Well, one other thing is, remember too, this is a temporary appointment to fill the term of Shelley Beck's position until the special election that will be held November 8th, 2020.
Twenty twenty-two.
Twenty twenty-two, I'm sorry. At the time of that special election, the city council canvases the votes of that election to certify that they're accurate within 10 days after the election. Once that's done, then this position will be filled by the winner of that election.
Okay, so, so you won't have to wait till January. Okay. Any questions at the council before we start with that? Then we'll start with Tanner Belfney. If you can come up to the podium.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Tanner Belfney. I'm at 19534 East Front Boulevard. Before I get too far into it, I'd like to thank the mayor and the council members for taking the time to hear my position and recognize that I have an interest in helping serve the city. And again, at minimum, I thank you just for taking the time to hear me out today. As far as a quick introduction, I'm in my late 30s. I've been a part of East Bethel since 2007 as a resident. Prior to that, my grandmother and father moved here in 92 on Coon Lake. So I've been spending the better part of now 30 years and the majority of my life at some point or another. I do love the city. I think it shows with some of the tenure that I put in and from roads to planning and commission, or planning and zoning, as well as some other commissions over time, that I'd love to see the city grow. And again, I appreciate you taking the time tonight. Happy to answer any questions that you may have for me.
Anyone wanna start?
I guess, why do you wanna serve on city council, Tanner?
Well, as I, as I kind of said before, that I've served in a number, number of commissions. When I first moved here, and I'll try not to be long with others, but when I first moved here, I, there was a, one of the city easements was in front of my house, and I remember reaching out to Jack at that time, who was a public works director, if I remember correctly. And Jack had introduced me to the Roads Commission, and said that there was, you know, a need, a need for the city. And when I started asking more questions about different things, and it was just, it was like pulling on a ball of yarn, and it just, the string kind of just kept going. And I realized quickly that I had an interest in, in the city, even though I was a new resident, but I had an interest in where the city was going, what was happening. And I've just, I've a, I've kind of, the city has helped nurture that flame over time, as I've watched the city go through a lot of ups, a lot of downs. Unfortunately, in some of the down times, I, you know, I felt the need that, you know, the city needed a little more leadership. I ran for mayor in 2012. Unfortunately, I did lose that election, but by a narrow vote, but I was still happy to have, to put my best foot forward, and that only helped further my time with planning and zoning. And I think in the last 10 years, I've, I've watched the city really start to grow, because planning, planning and developing doesn't just happen overnight, as much as we would all love to see it turn over. I think in the last six, seven years, we've really seen some good growth between the EDA, the city council, the mayor, public works, the city staff have all done a great job in, in getting us to where we are, and we're starting to see a lot of that development happen. And I feel I have a little bit of a part in that with my time on planning and zoning, and like I said, the power line transmission group, that I'd like to keep going with that and see, see how far we can take it.
Tanner, this position requires a commitment of your personal, personal time requires 15, 15 night meetings per year. Do you have the time to devote to these meetings and special meetings?
Yes, I do. It's actually something I did consider coming into this, especially, again, going from planning and zoning, where it was one to two meetings a month. This would obviously be a bit more of that, but it is something I have discussed with my family and my kids, and everybody's in full support and looks forward to, if I was lucky enough to have the appointment, and you guys considered me the best candidate today, that, you know, they do fully support me and understand that there will be a time commitment for that as well.
So a lot of what we do is problem solving and conflict management and trying to get resolution at items. And I know, you know, being in planning, you saw that a few times at the public hearings. And it's just something, it could be the smallest of issues, it could be a bigger issue. And so how, how, how do you look at approaching conflict, especially in a, in a public sense, you know, in a public meeting?
I guess the first thing I do try to do is I, you know, each individual that we've ever heard, and then, and thank you for recognizing that my time, I've seen some of this over time, and, you know, with individuals standing at this side of the podium, one of the things I've always tried to do is, is A, number one, always remember that there is three sides to a story. There, there is, you know, if there's an individual in conflict with, say, with another individual, for example, trying to understand the first person's position, but also know that there is another side to it, and then weigh, and then weigh out the differences and what aligns with set stories. If it was an issue with, between two residents, just to cite an example, and try to figure what I would do best in that situation if it were me in return, and what, what would happen on the opposite side, if I was in the other person's shoes. And try to come up with the best resolution that serves everybody's needs, if it's possible, or make a, make a hard decision if you have to, if it only serves one. But if it's what's in the best interest of the city at the time, that's what we're here to do. And if it follow, and I'm sorry to further on that, and if it also follows what's, what's legal. We have, you know, just to cite another example, we've seen other issues where businesses may have wanted to come to the city, or residents want something, and although I may agree that is something that's necessary, or maybe just an inconvenience and a way to settle it, but if it's not to the letter of the law, unless the law changes, we have to follow that. That's part of what we're here to do.
Okay, thank you.
Are you familiar with the, the city's comprehensive plan?
Yes, it's a, oh, go ahead.
How does that align with your vision for our city?
Well, again, being a part of the planning and zoning for as much, for as long as I was, I was involved in the 2040 update. So I do feel I've got a little bit of a personal touch into there as well, because I was able to give my input at that time. I feel pretty satisfied with, with what the outcome of that was, because I do believe on a, on a raw basis, the best area that the city has is Highway 65 corridor, is, it's a vital artery. There's no reason that that area couldn't be developed in bars mixed-use business, higher density, while still maintaining the rural feel in, in the outer areas just beyond the highway. And that, again, at the raw sense, that's how I view the comp plan, and I think it's a good plan that we have working forward. Look forward to helping if I can.
I have a two-part question. Have you attended or viewed a city council meeting in the last two years, which should be yes or no? And following that, are you aware of the current issues confronting the city? What do you believe those issues would be?
Certainly. Yes, I have been involved in, in viewing and attending city council meetings. I did move, briefly, I'll just state that I did move out of the city for a year, which is why I was no longer on planning and zoning. So there was a short period of time that I was not in attendance or viewing as being a non-resident, but prior to that, in the two-year history, I did obviously spend some time again with planning and zoning and watching the council meetings. It wasn't until recently and moving back that I'm starting to become more familiar again with, with what is facing the city at the moment. Some of the main issues that I do know that we have been facing are, you know, some open ordinance issues, which I think have always kind of been a, been out there. There's always some things that need tweaking and adapting and adjusting, because the world changes. That's just the reality of it. Situations change, and, and the vision of the city has changed over time. So therefore, those ordinances need to be updated. I also know we're currently looking at, at the broadband issue that, that you guys are looking at in the recent appointments. Like I said, there's also, I know there's been some talk about expanding some staff. Budgeting is always an issue that needs to be brought up, and it's a, you know, highly considered issue, and needs to be, you know, done with good due diligence.
You mentioned, you mentioned budget, and this position, you know, once it's filled, you're walking right into, right into the middle of our budget.
Yep.
You know, in September, we'll be passing a budget. So to that extent, have you looked at all where our current budget, our proposed budget is for next year? Have you reviewed it at all?
To be honest, I have not seen a full review of it, but that is something I definitely, with appointment, I would be spending more time.
Okay.
Develop, or putting more time into that and upfront. Unfortunately, this position was something I was considering, because it's only just recently been, been, been opened.
Recognize the fact, it's only been a couple of weeks.
Yes, thank you. And again, as a renewed resident as well, getting settled.
Tanner, I'd like your thoughts on promoting business development and the expansion of our city. I know we got a couple of housing developments coming in. I'd just like, like your thoughts on some of that?
Well, I know we have, as, like you preserve, if I remember correctly, is currently just filling up. I remember when that was still conceptually from Shaw originally, and again, I'm, I, some of my, my history, I come from a family in, in the framing and building trades. So it's always great to see new development happening. But again, at the same point, we do live in East Bethel, and there is a rural feel. So I, again, I kind of touched on this earlier, but I'd love to see, like I said, the Highway 65 corridor developed with, again, solid foundational businesses that are, you know, going to be here for long term. But I also recognize that in order to have that, there is a need for the higher-density homes. And those, and those types of individuals that are looking for that, like the access on and off the highway, those also do serve, you know, those individual businesses that the rest of us would like to enjoy, that are gonna be a little more closer to them and a little more daily users of those businesses. So it's, you know, there is no perfect system, but all we can really hope for is the best balance, and that's gonna require, again, in order to have the luxuries of some of the commercial businesses, we also need to have the balance of that higher-density homes and residents to keep them, keep the businesses afloat and interested in staying here in East Bethel or coming here.
Do you have any particular goals or objectives that you'd like to accomplish once you, should you, should I listen?
I think I've kind of touched on this a little bit throughout this entire interview process, but I really, my, my goals are to help, help develop a place that I can feel happy that my family can continue to grow and hopefully be generational. I like to feel that already started, like I said, when my grandparents moved here. Over time, my family has kind of become somewhat semi-established in, in the town. And again, if I can have, if I can have something to do with that, and, you know, be able to look back and, and know that I helped develop a place that is, you know, that people enjoy living, can be happy to be here, and can look and enjoy beautiful surroundings, but still enjoy some amenities, that's, I would say that would be something on my, my list of goals that I could be happy to check off if I'm able to look back on that.
Any other questions for Tanner?
There's one. Some issues and matters that come up before council, some situations that come in front of council, they can be stressful, full of adversity, confrontational at times. Do you have the ability to handle those types of situations?
I feel I do. I think, again, I'm gonna lean a little bit on my history here, but I think in my, in my time on planning and zoning, serving as commission, or as the committee, committee chair, a couple of times throughout those, throughout the years, we've had some contentious issues that came up. And in those times, trying to give residents the appropriate amount of time to feel that they've been heard, but also being respectful enough to the rest of the, of the council, or the committee, as well as the city, to not let it go on farther than it needed to. And again, to go back to what I said earlier to Mayor Voss about trying to look at all sides of it, try to be a good delegate, and help keep, keep balance and understanding. So yes, ultimately, I think I can, I can help in those situations.
Okay. Any other questions? Anything else you'd like to add?
I'd just, again, like to thank everybody for taking the time and the consideration. It does mean a lot to me that, again, it's, and I, again, I've spent some time working in the city. I want to continue to do that in any possible capacity. And again, I thank you all for your consideration and hopefully a vote this evening.
Thanks, Tanner.
Thank you.
Dan Dobbs.
I'm Dan Dobbs. I live at 4474 200th Lane. I'm not very good with, I don't have no words like he has at all. So I'm sorry, you're gonna be better off just asking me questions. I've been a resident my whole life, well, since I was 12 out here. My mom still lives over in a relative point. I live by EJ's, so I don't know, you guys got questions for me? It'd probably be the best way to handle it for me.
Well, how about, how if we start with, why do you want this position?
You know, I just wanna, it seems like things are just in disarray at times, and I think I, I think that I'd like to help make things go forward for the city. I mean, I love this city. I lived here my whole life. I think it's a beautiful place to be. I mean, where can you live where there's three lakes within five miles of your house? You know, I mean, come on. Yeah, I worked for the city for a long time, over 20 years. I've watched and seen, and I don't know, I think maybe I could kind of help. That's about it, you know, really. I mean, I don't have, I don't have any real experience in all this stuff, but I thought, you know, throw my hat in the ring and see what happens, you know? To be honest, I'm a, I'm a pretty straightforward guy. I mean, I don't, you know, it is what it is. You know, you tell me, you ask me a question, I'll tell you. So I don't know, just kind of see what happens.
Okay.
Like you say, I, I don't have a lot of words, so you just have to give me questions, and I'll answer them the best I can.
There we go. Well, thanks for handing your, putting your hat in the ring.
Yeah, you know, I thought.
We need people to do that sometimes.
Just thought, I've seen, you know, it just seems like people need to step up instead of hanging around in the background, if you know what I mean. You know, just step up and do what's right for where you live. Don't you wanna, I mean, I like it here. I don't want to move from here. I like it. I like, I like seeing progress on the, on the 65. It took long enough. I watched it for years, you know, come on, is it ever gonna pick up? It kind of came with some scratches and dents along the way, but it's coming. I mean, I don't think we have a choice. I think it's coming either way now. But I guess that's what the council decides, what it's gonna be and how it's gonna be. So, but other than that, any more questions? I mean?
Dan, I'm gonna ask you, Dan, what's, what's your thoughts on promoting business development and the expansion of the city?
Oh, we need way more businesses. We need a lot. I think we need, what we could use is a big box store, but I don't know that that'll happen, from what I've seen over the years. I mean, look at the corner in Viking and on the west, northwest corner. It's sad, it's sad. We had big talk of big plans, and then it never happened. So I think we need, yeah, we need to promote something. I don't think we need any more liquor stores. You know, I think, I think they'll come. I think things will, once, I think, I think they'll come. I, I don't think we have much of a choice. I think it'll take a little while, but once the ball gets rolling, I think it'll just take right off. I think it'll be, that's what I think, but that's just my personal opinion. You know, I don't really have any other opinion than that. It's pretty cool. A QuickTrip, I think, is coming. It's close to my mom. She hates that soda crisis gone. She's 84 years old. She shopped there all the time. Now maybe a QuickTrip might be something for her. I don't know. We'll see. Anything else?
I got a two-part question.
Sure.
Have you attended or viewed a city council meeting in the past two years? And following that, are you aware, and what do you think are current issues confronting the city?
I watched a couple on TV. I worked here up until last year, then I retired. I retired last June. So I kind of see from the back, the other side of everything, how things are going. What was the second part of your question? What do I?
Are you aware, and what do you think are the current issues confronting the city?
Oh, yeah. I know a couple of issues that are, that are tough for you guys. There's some tough decisions to be made, and I don't know if I can help with that or not. I, I think I can. I, I think, yeah, there's a couple of things going on, you know? It takes time. I gotta believe it takes some time. You can't just drop the hammer and call it. I mean, you gotta kind of work it out, make it right with everybody, you know? Yeah, I think I got a handle on it, you know? I, I, I watch social media. Who doesn't? There are some issues, of course, but I think the city can get through them. I've seen them before. Things like this come and go. They just roll along. The city just rolls along, but it's bumpy. It's one of them bumpy times, you know, with COVID and all that too. So I think it'll, I think it'll work out okay. I mean, I don't, I don't think there's gonna be, sooner or later, it'll work out one way or the other, you know? I hope. But I've seen some changes from the ground level, you know? So you say I don't have a lot of words to say or what, that, you know, just me, you know? Yeah, you got any other questions? I mean, do I have the time? Oh, yeah, I got time now. Yeah. So I don't know. Is there anything else you guys need?
I'd like to know if you have any specific goals or objectives that you'd like to?
No, I'm not, I have no, I don't have any, as far as, what do you call that? Well, goals, of course, is a lot to help with the city get better and, of course, grow, because that's why I live here. I don't have anything that I'm, I'm here for the city. I don't have anything for me to, that I look at and go, I want this or that. No, I just, I'm new to this whole thing too. I don't, I'm not, I've never been on planning and zoning. I've never done any of that. So I'll have to watch and listen and do my reading, I guess, you know? I mean, really. But I'm a pretty straight-up guy, so that's about what I can offer.
What, what other civic activities have you been involved?
Well, I was involved with Tribute to the Troops for quite a while. We started that in 2003 or '04, and I rode with them guys. That was, if you know what Tribute to the Troops is, it's a, a group that pays attention to the fallen soldiers' families. We'd go visit, make sure they're all right, give them a hug. Then I got involved with Patriot Guard, which was a while back. There was a big to-do at a serviceman's funeral, and a bunch of people came up from, I want to say, Louisiana, and really stirred up his funeral. What the Patriot Guard does is we used to go to places and make a flagline around servicemen's funerals to keep people out, to let their family grieve and do whatever. It used to be a big ride that, I don't, they can't do it anymore because of COVID. And then I was involved in Booster Day Car Show. I mean, I put it on for a bunch of years, you know? Nobody else would do it. Harley quit, so somebody had to do it. So I thought, well, I'll do it. So I like cars, you know, so. But that's about it. I don't, you know, I don't do the planning and zoning thing or any, or any of that stuff. I mean, I, I probably should have, but I go into work every day. It was probably enough here, you know? But does that answer your question kind of, or?
It does, and I appreciate your service to our city.
Okay. But, yeah, we did, we did that for quite a few years, but it got, it got weird. Everything gets weird, and it changes, and we just kind of moved on from that. So, but any other questions?
Anything else for Dan? You want, you have a closing statement?
Thanks for, I threw my hat in the ring figuring, well, you know, I don't, we'll see. But thank you for letting me come up and speak anyway, so.
Absolutely.
I appreciate it, so.
Thanks for your interest, so.
Yeah, thanks, Dan.
Thanks, Dan. Wanda McLaren.
Good evening. I'm Wanda McLaurin. I live at 23380 London Street Northeast. And I'm kind of unique to this city. I chose to be in this city. Brian and I came back from the East Coast, because I'm basically a West Coast girl, and quite honestly hated the East Coast. So we made a decision. We were coming back. We looked at three places. We looked at Idaho, we looked at Montana, and we looked at Minnesota. Each one of them, we really didn't have much draw. We had family in each, each area, or close enough family. And I looked at the state, looked at the cities, looked at the area, and believe it or not, over Montana, we chose East Bethel. The only, the only thing that we had as a requirement was we had to be an hour from a major airport. So that opened up a lot of room for where we could go. East Bethel offered me what we were looking for. We were looking for rural community that had property, because if anybody's from the East Coast, there is no property in the East Coast. And being from the West Coast, I needed the space. I grew up in Hawaii, so water was important to me. As was said earlier, where can you go that there's that much water this close? Yes, Minnesota has 10,000 lakes, but not in my backyard. I've been really blessed in life. I've worked three major companies, had really three diverse, really diverse careers, and was able to retire in early 2000. So now I work part-time at the Green Barn. I get involved in the city. I'm involved with city council. I'm involved with planning. I'm on the chamber. I actually am on the chamber board. I do the golf committee. I do a bunch of things that I felt, you know, that's my second career. Green Barn's my first career. That's my second career. I, I feel that if you live in a city, you need to know about it, and if there's something you feel you can offer to it, you need to step up and do it. I got involved, as all of you, most of you in this room know, over the CST, CST, let's call it a opportunity, for lack of a better word. And I got involved then, and I stayed involved. I went from there to the EDA, to the Planning Commission, and now I'm sitting before you. I'd like to thank you for the opportunity to stand before you, and I'd like to say I'm honored to be among these four candidates. Questions?
What do you, what do you see the development on 65? You know, there's, there's this conflict we have, not, I shouldn't say conflict, a balance we have between the country feel and, and what a balance we have between the country feel and, and what may or will happen along Highway sixty-five. How, how do you see managing that conflict over the years?
Well, I kinda see one of, I have that as one of our biggest issues in the city right now, is the rural versus commerce or business, if you wanna put it that way. If you wanna stay rural, then you kinda have to have that dividing line, which we've done with sixty-five. I mean, I was on planning, now was Tanner, when we were writing the comp plan. And I think, as Tanner said, we did a really good job of defining, you know, this is going to be our business corridor, and we're going to try and keep rural out of that. I do admit, coming from a bigger city, that there are some amenities that are needed here in the city. But I also admit that until we get enough boots on the ground, the, the bigger companies or the bigger amenities are not gonna be looking at us. We also have the issue of only having water and sewer in one quadrant. And so, you know, bigger places, most of them, don't wanna deal with septic tanks and wells. So, you know, that's gonna be one of our growth things, is where are we going next? You know, we've pretty much done south of Viking. That's getting pretty much built out. So one of our challenges is where do we go next? Do we go north and go above two-thirty-seven and try and get water and sewer off of Whispering Aspens? Do we hit Sims and try and do something at Sims and make that the next business corridor? That's one of the things I see as being our biggest challenge. In order to grow, we have to have amenities for this commerce. We also have to have boots on the ground, so we need the elevages. We need those type of high-density in a certain area to help get that money there.
Good, thanks.
Two-part question for you. Have you viewed or attended any of the city council meetings in the past two years? And are you aware of what, and what do you think are the current issues confronting the city?
I have attended many meetings. As most of you know, I have a seat in the back corner back there that I used to sit all the time, but you notice I sat up front today. The main issues I, I said is, is I think is the rural versus commerce. That's one. That's an issue in the city. It appears we have, as a city, a black eye with some community members on, they don't feel we're doing enough, and I know we are. It's just the, the perception, I'll use that word. And I, I think that's one, and that's, a lot of that could be a lack of communication, the wrong information getting out there. We all know there are certain places you shouldn't get information from, and unfortunately, that's where most of the people in this world today get their information from. And it's not always correct. It's not always right. And I worked for Microsoft for a very long time. The information that they have on data mining and everything else, and the more people that go out there and the more times it gets spread around, the more money they make. So they're never going to be the one to be, and neither should they be, the police for that. But we have to be the police and look at it and say, okay, this probably is not right. This probably is right, and if we question it, we need to go to the proper place and ask the questions. Those are what I feel are our biggest problems right now.
Any questions?
Do you have any specific goals or objectives that you'd like to accomplish?
I don't have what I would say are goals or, or things. What I would like to see happen is I'd like to see us continue to grow because we need to grow. And I wanna see us do it with cautious thought and optimism. I mean, you know, it, at first glance, something may not look like the best fit or best option, but I think we need to be optimistic. Okay, let's dig a little deeper and let's see. Maybe this could work for our city. Maybe this could work for our area. And I think we need to do that with, with caution, but I think we need to be optimistic in it. You can't make everyone happy a hundred percent of the time. We know that. There is just no, no way to do it. But I think with listening and compromise and negotiation, you can make most people understand why you've done something within the limits of our city ordinances.
On city council, there can be issues and situations that are, can be stressful, that have lots of adversity in them and can be confrontational. Do you believe that you can handle those kinds of situations, and how do you handle them?
I used to do union negotiations. So I, I like to handle them with, I'm gonna ask the direct questions. I'm gonna get your direct answers, I hope, and then you have to weigh. Sometimes it's good, sometimes it's bad. Nothing is ever black and white. Nothing is ever completely right or completely wrong. There's a gray area in there. And I like to look at the gray area and say, okay, this goes more to this or more to that. And I believe I could handle it.
Wanda, do you have the time? That's all I wanna know. Do you have the time to do this?
I have the time, sir. I have the time. I used to come to your meetings anyway, so.
But I mean, the month of August, we had five Mondays. We had meetings four times this month, so it's, 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 you never know.
Yep, I have the time. Suzanne, do you have any question for me?
I don't think I have any more questions for you. I think I've answered them all. Thank you.
Anything you wanna add at the end?
Just thank you for the opportunity.
Well, thank you. Thanks, Wanda.
Thank you, Wanda.
Thanks, Wanda.
Randy Placence, on Wanda, I apologize for mispronouncing your last name.
That's okay. It's been mispronounced my whole life.
I have cars in my head, so I'm sorry, so. Randy?
Good evening, Mayor and Council. I guess I would like to start out by saying that I really regret the fact that Shelley Beck decided to resign, because I thought that she was going to make a very good city council member. And you're kind of left now with a difficult decision as to replace her until an election can take place. And that's basically the reason that I decided to step up to the plate and show up here tonight. My name is Randy Placence. Most of you know me. I live at seven-one-five, one-hundred-ninety-second Avenue Northeast. We moved to East Bethel about thirty years ago with my wife and three children. They all have gone through the local school system. I work for Target Corporation. I've been there for twenty years. And hopefully I'll continue to work there until my retirement, so. I'll just leave the questions for you at this point. Most of you have had history with me, so by all means, let's, let's get on.
Questions? Randy, I'll ask you the first one. What are your thoughts on promoting business and the expansion of the city?
Well, I think, I think it's very important that we do it in an organized fashion. I mean, you know, we currently have the Elvage, you know, property that is currently developing, and I think we need to work closely with them in order to develop the city. I also think we have to be careful to make sure that our ordinances and zoning are proper in order to make sure that, that it is done in a way that, that we want this city to develop. I, I think there has been some concerns from certain residents about certain companies that come to East Bethel with an interest in starting a business here. And I would like to be welcoming to all and consider each of those appropriately, but there are times where, you know, certain things may not fit with our city. But I think at last council meeting, the chamber and the city business leaders came to city council, and I think they had it right, which is, you know, just work with us. Sit down. Let's come up with a solution. Let's work through what, any disagreements that we may have, and, and let's build a better community together, so.
I have a two-part question. Have you attended or viewed any of the city council meetings in the past two years? And are you aware of, and what do you think of, what, what do you think are the current situations confronting the city?
Sure. Well, I was on city council for the previous four years to this year, and so obviously I was, attended almost all of those meetings. I only missed a handful, I think, in the entire time that I was on city council. As to the issues that are facing the city, we have, we have a few, and, and a couple that have kind of concerned me as of late have to do with making sure that, you know, we are getting the proper due dates for some of the IUPs that are happening, making sure that some of the documentation has been filed correctly. I think, you know, the council is gonna have to consider, you know, how to keep an eye on some of those, those issues relating to, you know, what documents are being, you know, appropriately filed. I also think that, you know, we, the city has to, you know, consider again how we're, how, how we're gonna go forward with, with some of the properties that are in the area. Making sure that we are talking to each of those businesses and landowners to make sure that we are working together as a team in order to develop the city of East Bethel. There are other issues as well. I mean, I could probably go on for a while, and talking about, you know, the concerns that we have. I mean, obviously, we have animal control issues with dog bites and, and having to deal with those issues, and those are all part of, you know, working through as a council and making, coming up with the best decision, so.
Why do you wanna continue to return to city council? Do you have any specific goals that you're intent on accomplishing?
Sure. Well, as I mentioned, you know, obviously, watching over and, and making sure that we are, city staff is, is kinda covering the issues that they need to cover. I think the other thing that, that, you know, we kind of need to do is take a look at reinvesting in our ordinances and also our zoning, and to make sure that we are doing those appropriately. Like I said before, some of the businesses that we have, we'd like to make sure that, that, you know, it's gonna fit what is gonna come to East Bethel. If it's possible with COVID, I'd also like to reinstate the game nights that we had going. It didn't get very far because of COVID, but it would be nice to kind of start that up again. I think it's, I think it's important that we make sure that the city council is working to judge everything fairly and to make sure that things are transparent. And another thing that I would like to do is to create a YouTube series, again with council's approval, that would kind of go over some of the descriptors about how the city works, how some of the ordinances are affecting people's lives. I think that we could do a better job of making sure that we are communicating with the residents as to how the city works and how we can do better.
Thank you.
Budget's one thing we do every year, and I know you've been through a few budget cycles in the past. And, and as, as I mentioned earlier, we're in the middle of our current budget review. Have you been following that at all or reviewed our proposed budget for two thousand twenty-two?
I have. I mean, you know, obviously, one of the biggest changes on the budget is, you know, hiring a new fire inspector, and obviously, you know, I haven't watched it as closely as I did when I was on council, but I am familiar with the process, and it wouldn't take me very long to look it over and, and get back up to speed.
Okay. Any other questions, Randy? Closing statement?
I would just like to thank the council for their time and in consideration, and have a good evening. Thank you.
Thanks, Randy. And I wanna thank all four candidates. You know, this has been a, a process we don't do very often, hardly at all. You know, hopefully, and it's been a short time, so we, we got a good response. We got four great candidates tonight to review, and I wanna thank you for being here. And also I wanna add too, there is one opening currently on planning, and, and it's another opportunity for yourselves and others to be involved with our city. And Jack, when is that application process open till?
September fifteenth.
So we got a couple of weeks yet for our planning, and then we'll fill that position, so.
And there could possibly be two openings.
There could be. We'll see what happens tonight, so. Any questions? Otherwise, we'll just go ahead and, and vote.
I just, I just wanna say thanks to the four candidates too. It's, it's, it's gonna be a tough decision. Everybody did outstanding job, and I just wanna say thanks for coming forward.
Thank you. Thank you for applying, putting your name in, taking the opportunity to participate with your city, and hopefully, depending on the decision that's made tonight, if you don't get in, apply and apply again. It's, any openings, any boards, there's lots of opportunity here. And I'm, I'm sure if you come to Jack's office and say, I wanna be involved, we'll find some way for you to be involved in the city, so thank you.
Okay, all right. We will vote now, then. You're gonna make this one. Sorry, I only fold it by once. We know which ballot it's yours at least now, so.
I could've made a swan.
All right. Would no further ado. Tanner Belfany received one vote. Wanda McLaren received three votes. And with that, I will I will move Resolution two thousand twenty-one dash sixty, Resolution Appointing Wanda McLaren, I'm gonna say it right this time, to the vacant council seat of Shelley Beck, as her second to the session. Motion, or seconded by Tim. Discussion.
Congratulations.
Congratulations. I hope you're ready to run, so. Next meeting is Tuesday, right, next week?
Since the Department is tonight, if you'll step forward and take the oath of office.
If he could go to the microphone, too, please. Yeah, we should vote on the resolution first, I think, so. To the motion, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? That motion passes. Jack?
Wanda, if you will read the oath of office and... Wanda, if you will read the oath of office, and then you'll be sworn in.
I raise my right hand?
Yes, please.
I, Wanda McLaurin, do hereby solemnly swear that I support the Constitution of the United States and the Constitution of the State of Minnesota, and that I will faithfully, justly, and impartially discharge the duties of city council member for the city of East Bethel, County of Anoka, State of Minnesota, to the best of my knowledge and ability. So help me God.
Thank you, Wanda. You're duly sworn in, and our next meeting is Monday at 7:00 PM.
Thank you, and thank you.
And actually, Wanda, you are official city council member. You're welcome to take the seat for the last motion of the night. And if Mr. Harrington is so inclined, maybe you can make the motion to adjourn.
I would love to make the motion to adjourn this special city council meeting.
I'll second.
Motion's made in second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? That motion passes. Our meeting's adjourned. Thank you, everyone.